All right. We're at the Board of Selectmen's meeting Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. At 7:00 PM in person and virtual. I'd like to first sweep the flag. Let the leaders. The United States of America. And the Republic of which stands one nation under God in the Israel with liberty and justice. I'd like to follow this meeting in order. And first, I'd like to ask for anybody in the public who'd like to comment.
Same old, same old. Same concerns, nothing new.
Would you just give your name and address for the record?
You guys don't know me yet?
No, we do. Jim Lorsch, 83 Brookfield. There we go.
Okay, do we have any correspondence? So no. Now we're looking at the approval of minutes for the May 7th regular meeting and the May 21st special meeting.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes for May 7th as the regular meeting.
Pam Sawyer made a motion to accept the minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Matt, Matt or Flaherty? Seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Amanda.
Yes, Amanda.
A. It should be P. Sawyer withdrew her motion, not P. Savidge.
Yep.
That's it.
Now, is there any?
We're using a time.
How could you motion a moment? Is there any other discussion?
I concur, Mr. Chairman.
Well, so we will have a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's a, Tim said it's seven in favor, zero opposed. That motion moves forward.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of May 21st, 2024 special meeting.
Now, it's not too bad. Five more seconds that. Do we have any discussion? Yes, Gwen.
The numbering is wrong, but that it's not a big deal. There's two number twos, not a big deal. And then our, I hate, I hesitate to say anything because Linda, I think, does an absolutely fantastic job on our minutes. So I, you know, something, something minor like that, I probably shouldn't have even said it, but like Linda, I think you're fabulous. And then under, under three. On, under, under the Pejoli driveway application, the second to last paragraph, it has me abstaining. But I should, it should read, G. Marion recused herself because there is a distinction there.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
She'd be recusing.
Right.
Yeah.
I concur, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven, four, zero against.
Number four, so should.
Now we move on to. Number five, appointments, reappointments and resignations.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint James Lorsch to the Inland Wetlands Commission for his reappointment. Second, and thank you.
When there is a second to that? Is there?
Just gonna have to do them all together. Pardon? Can we do them all together?
If we can, if nobody has a question.
If there's no objection, I will, I will withdraw my motion and reframe the motion.
Okay.
Except for, except for G. Except for after G's resignations. So I would move that we reappoint the following. Members to commissions, James Lorsch, the Inland Wetlands Commission is a reappointment. Michael McDonald to the Inland Wetlands Commission is a reappointment. Linda Rudolph on the Veterans Commission, reappointment. Paul Toomey, Veterans Commission, reappointment. Bob Langton, Fire Commission, reappointment.
Second.
Um, any discussion?
I would like to say, Mr. Chairman, that we're very grateful to having people service, serve on these commissions for us and do yeoman's work on a volunteer basis.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Uh, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's seven, four, zero opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Andrew Gordon to the Inland Wetlands Commission. And Erin Tonya. Tonyali. T O N Y A L I, the library page. Both have resigned, resigning. One from a. An appointment, commission appointment and one from being a paid employee. So I'd like to accept both of their resignations in one motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Five more seconds. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank them both for their efforts and work, both on a volunteer basis and as the library page.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Seven, four, zero opposed. Ongoing business, number six.
Mr. Chairman, we have to act, to consider an act on approval of supervisor's contract at this time. I would like to make a motion to accept a supervisor's consent.
I'd like to second it with one stipulation. In that, one of the items that isn't listed in there. Yeah, it was to include the current language regarding the state health plan. That was agreed upon, but somehow wasn't, wasn't in, in the language of the contract.
Mr. Chairman, I would accept that as an addition to the amendment.
Uh, we have a second.
I did.
Oh, you did. Is there any other discussion?
Just so I understand, this, what we're looking at here is the actual agreement that's going to be signed by all the parties.
So the, these are, this is the tentative agreement to the things that we agreed on during negotiations. And these things would be inserted into the contract.
And this is the document that's left out the health insurance?
Yes.
Right, right. Okay, so this, this, this tentative agreement then is going to be amended to have the health insurance included?
Right.
Yeah.
And I, and I did review it very carefully.
Amanda?
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, so this covers five staff, right? Of those staff, which of them are exempt versus non-exempt?
None of them are exempt.
Oh, okay. The contract mentioned exempt, okay. Is comp time paid out upon separation or does it just, just appear? I didn't see that in the old one either. Yes, I have a question. I asked if comp time, compensation time is paid out.
I don't think, I don't believe it's spelled out in the contract.
Just, you know, wanted to highlight that. You know, the pension, so I did some digging into the pension, right? We don't use seniors, right? The, the state.
That's correct.
We're one of the few half towns that don't use it, um, which is higher than ours, right? Now it's a, I want to say seven percent. So like, we're still below the state, the state system, but you know, it seems like it's going up a half a percent every year or every two years, right? And like, do we ever hit a cap or a limit, right? Like, and I'm just comparing this to the everyday worker who either one doesn't have a pension. Or two might get a match for a 401K, which is typically capped between three and four percent and just thinking how much of it. Like when they look at this, how it looks compared to what they see in their pockets and just wanting to keep that in mind. In further negotiations, but was glad to see that we're still in line with slash under the state, seven percent.
It's three years.
Right. Yeah, it goes up. Oh, every three years?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's four, three years.
Right.
One, two, three, right.
Right, it goes up once. I was looking back at the old contract too to see it had gone up, you know, a half a percent and another half a percent. And then in section nine. Well, so not in section nine here, but in the original contract, right? The one that's in place right now, there's a section nine on insurance. Which lays out the employee's contribution percent. And I didn't see any revision to that section in this proposed tentative agreement. So is it just going to stay at the 17% that it's at right now?
That's correct.
Okay. That is it. Thank you.
Is there any other questions, discussion?
Great questions.
Uh, so all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Tim, that's seven, four, zero opposed. Uh, now we have to consider it.
I want to thank the committee for spending their time to do this. It's not, it's not the fun job at all.
It's a big learning curve.
It's, well, not only that, but it's. There's a lot to it. It does set, it does set the standard for things going forward. That's why it's important, but you know, we appreciate all the time you guys spend.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, for that, I get a candy?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was your dinner.
Yeah.
Mister candy of them. Now, seven B, consider an act on special town meeting date to approve the supervisor's local eighteen collective bargaining contract. Through a town. Meeting. So, a public hearing, actually. Is it a public hearing or a town meeting?
No, it's a town meeting.
Okay.
It's a town meeting. What was suggested would be prior to the, um, the Pejoli hearing. Which would be six o'clock on June 25th.
What's prior to?
We have a public hearing on Pejolli's.
We have a, a tentative, uh, meeting, uh, on June 25th. For the, for the Pejoli hearing on that property at, I believe it was.
Yeah, I think that's seven.
It was seven.
Yeah, I was wondering why don't we push this back to six?
I think six thirty would be fine.
Yeah.
Um, I'd really just like to announce that I am out of the country for a family wedding. I will not be in attendance. So if you do both of them, then I will not be able to leave.
The, well, town meeting is, town is, is, no, I still think. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I will make the motion still. Pam, if you don't mind that we, we. You know, the town meeting is. One in which it's what been a part of it, not more.
Well, I understand.
And hopefully more people than just us show up.
Right. I was there for the original.
Yeah.
Discussion between the lawyers, so I feel that I have a deep understanding of it.
Yeah.
Again, my apologies.
It's on audio, so you can listen to the new one.
So, so. I think six thirty, six thirty probably would work better. Yeah, and I, I can.
You need a second.
Yes, we need a second. Yeah.
I'll thank yours.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
So that meeting's at six thirty and then the Pejoli hearing is at seven.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Abstained.
Six, four, Pam Sawyer abstains. Uh, now we're going to consider an act on adding First Electman Rod Fornier as becoming an authorized signer on the town checking accounts. Currently, there's only two names on it.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we. Add First Electman Rodney Fornier as a signator. Uh, for the town checking accounts as presented.
We should probably correct the title of. Interim Administrator to Town Administrator.
With, with that addition to the motion.
I'll second that. The First Electman signature has been on. Available to be on all, all of the town's checks since before me.
Yeah, okay. And. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep. So that's seven in favor, zero opposed. Uh, now there's a discussion on the First Electman's pay. Is there? Any discussion about, wasn't that going to be brought to a meeting, a town meeting or?
I thought that was going to go to the subcommittee.
Yeah, subcommittee. Yeah, we're supposed to have a subcommittee agreement before we go forward.
Who is the subcommittee? Is that me yet?
It would be the same, same, same group that just negotiated the supervisor's contract.
Oh, so we got to put it.
So we'll move this to subcommittee.
Yeah.
At this time, will, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we table. The First Electman's pay discussion. Until actively referred from the subcommittee.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'm in seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That's seven. Yes.
Chairman, then I would also table E, seven E. Uh, to set a hearing date until actively referred from the subcommittee.
Second, second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven, four, zero opposed. Uh, discussion on how to proceed with the results of the retreat. This one's not so fast. Well, so we think we got to pick a couple of topics and move them to a couple of committees. Has anybody had a chance to review the?
Yeah, and we. It was interesting that we had, I think, like five that were really high, high on everybody's, pretty much everyone's list.
We'll pass it down.
Was this the copy? I don't have.
There's not a copy in there, Tim.
I've read it online. Yeah, I just assumed it was there too.
Oh. Do you want?
That's right here. And. One of them, to me, one, one of the top ones is, is. Are the town facilities. I mean, that, because. You have to plan so far ahead and, and, you know, we have. That temporary office has bought us time so that we can plan ahead. And if we don't start now, whoever's. Here at the end of this four years are going to be in deep trouble. I mean, it's going, because you'd be starting from ground zero again. It'll be, you know, our bonding situation in the year of. Five to six years from now will be significantly better and the town will be in a great position to move forward. I think it'd be who's this. Or to, to really start looking at, we've had studies as to. And I don't want to repeat without, that we, you know, retreat, retreat size, what we should have. But I think. Now we should seriously look at it. And. You can't decide on where, what you want for a town hall until you figure out where you want it. Because whatever you have, you want it to, you want it to fit into its environment. I mean, uh, we've always, in our, we've been discussing this. Three boards, all right, and some of the thoughts, and this is why it would vary. Do you want a, a traditional brick building or do you want something that looks like a colonial building, like to have an ashtray? And that's a, you know, that looks like a, a building that could have been built in the late 1800s with, you know, just modern type look. And if so. Where are we, where, where are we going to put it? So I think. Where you locate it, you, you want it to fit in, you know, its environment. So I think number one is. For us to come up with some, I mean, not just. Thereabouts, actual, actual location so that we can have a public discussion on it and, and to get public input, to pick a site. And then I think design our building around that site. That's my thought.
Um, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think we, we should have, um, the facilities committee. To take a look at possible existing sites. And not to make a decision, but to come up with a list of pros and cons. I think that'd be very helpful for the board to begin the consideration of where to put it. And they can adapt to citizens, they can keep it in-house in the, than the subcommittee. There are a number of ways to do that. And at subcommittee level to look at. Beginning to bring forward the discussion. And I think we should have an ad hoc member on that subcommittee. Who has a great interest in, in, um, in a new town hall in this location. But I think that, I think, I concur with Bob. The one of the things we should do is send it to just, to start off, where should we put it? And that needs some discussion.
Yes.
I'm concerned that I am all for a new town facility of some kind. I'm concerned with the fact that I, I've, I served, I think, on two prior facility study committees, beginning in 1993. And nothing, it, it never, nothing ever happened with them. And, and so I, I just don't want to get stuck in that cycle again. And I'm not saying I have an answer for how to not just get stuck in that cycle. Unless we all can agree as a group that we're not just going to. Bump this issue from month to month to month to month until we're three years down the road. Still talking about, well, the subcommittee is going to meet with this person. Now the subcommittee is going to meet with this person. You know, I think that we have to be committed to taking some kind of tangible step. Made without, and, and actually, you know, some kind of tangible step that actually progresses the, the, the issue. Instead of just kicking it down the road.
Mr. Chairman, would you ask the whole of board and see if there's consensus that we need a new town hall? Maybe we should start there in addressing Gwen's. Comments and findings in mind. Take a poll to see if there should be move forward because we do not have a majority of the board. Then I, I don't believe that this is the issue that we start on.
Well, wasn't that why we did the, they got the most dots?
Yes.
And people may have changed their mind. That was, that was a retreat that was not at a board meeting, that was not in open session.
So while we're in a board meeting, who's in favor thinks we need a new town hall? So.
Wait.
That's.
Wait.
Did you have a yes hand up there, Tim?
Well, I don't work in the town hall on a daily basis, so I would kind of defer to the folks that work there all the time. I mean, my instinct would say yes, but I'm curious as to the folks that are there every day.
Okay. So there's.
Are you, are you asking for a response from me?
Yeah, if this is an open discussion.
Sure. So I, I will say this, you know, first of all, I mean, this is, this is a beautiful facility. I've worked here for a lot of years. But it's a facility that doesn't meet on our modern needs. And it would, we would be better served if we could all be in an environment. That was designed to feed, to, to suit today's needs and all of our staff could be under going. It facilitates communication, it facilitates, you know, you know, good relationships. Um, and so I, I, I believe that it, it is something that, you know, is, is timely at some point, but, but I don't want to do it. At, at a time that it's not feasible for the taxpayers of Bolton to be able to afford either. And so there's a balance there that I think, you know, that this board has to struggle with and figure out, you know. When does the, when, when, when does the need, you know, when does that point coincide with the taxpayers' ability to fund meeting that need?
Mr. Chairman? Pam?
Uh, Tim, after serving in the position that Rodney's in and Bob's in. And watching the, the functionality, I think you'll find, or I would like to share that. When you have offices that are below ground and. Below and not on the same level and without an easy access, except to come through another office that should be more of a hallway and is. Holding three people that do a very important function. Um, it's, it's awkward. Um, it's awkward to have offices in what should be the gray hall. And you can't, you have to schedule certain meetings when certain people aren't in their cubicles and it's, it's.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's inefficient and it doesn't bode well for a, an efficient town structure and it's not modernized.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Amanda, go ahead.
I'm kind of of the opinion that we almost need a separate meeting to discuss this. I think going through each one, one by one and figuring out where we think it best belongs. You know, should be given its, its time and attention. And I do think that that could take. A little bit longer than we might want to spend in one of our regular meetings, um. Because there's a lot of different things on here. Some, like you said, are easy wins. We can set them up right away and others are going to take more time and consideration. Um, I, I don't want to like prolong the process, right? I do think we need some expediency because obviously time isn't standing still, but I do think it might behoove us to have the whole board sit around and do another follow-up. Kind of session.
As a, as a special meeting?
Yeah.
On that particular subject.
About next steps on the retreat priorities, the whole thing, the whole, not just town hall, correct?
Well, yeah, because a lot of, that's it, your honor. I, I started off with that because it's my, it's my top one. That's why I brought it up. And Gwen, you made a comment that I fully concur with in it that I am, you know. Since 1989, we spent, we modified this, changed that, adapted this, did anything and everything we possibly could to make what we have work. That's it. We're done. There's, there's no other, there really is. We're, we're really at the no other choice. That's why I, I, it is so high in my, my thing. But this, there are other things too. And I think part of the discussion is priorities, but that doesn't mean we can't move forward on one, one thing at a time. And, and I think that's, I think, man, that's, that's where you're going. And I, I kind of concur with that, with that mindset. We can't do it all at once.
No, but you have a couple of things you can go forward with this.
Absolutely.
It, this one is, I mean. It may or dear to my heart, actually, yes, it to me, that, that's, to have that solved, you've solved an issue for the next 50 years. I mean.
Right.
Mr. Chairman. I, I thought everybody on the board had read the retreat report and that maybe that's a mistake on my part. And so that's why I started off and concur with Bob and wanted to know what the consensus of the board was on, which would be the top item. I apologize if I stepped out of line.
Oh, no, and I wasn't necessarily insinuating that it's not top priority, but that. Like, I do think we can move on things concurrently, right? Like scheduling meetings of boards, multiple boards together, right? That can happen at the same time that we're doing this. And I just think. In my head, I see each of these being a row on a work plan with a, a, you know, where we identify who's going to carry it forward, what maybe our target potential deadlines are, right? I'm very project management oriented. And so I would like to see something on paper that holds us accountable to ourselves and to the public. That's all. And then the other question I had is. Aren't we doing a facility assessment? Because we had to, like, isn't there one?
We haven't put the RFP out yet.
But we have to in the very near term because, so.
Yeah, it's, it's in the works. We've started working on the RFP, but it's not out yet.
But that, that helps us decide what we need, what we really need for space.
For space.
But the board clerk has your hand up, maybe you.
Just waiting for Amanda to flash.
I'm done.
And then Bob jumped in.
I didn't see the hand. I apologize.
Linda, is it?
Is there a retreat report on the website?
No, it wasn't on.
No, we haven't put it on the website.
Okay, because I don't, I don't have it. I asked for it earlier today.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, you probably, if you emailed Kathy, she was out today, but I'll make sure you get that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay. Should we have a discussion then about that? Because it should be, I believe, published because it was an open meeting.
Yeah.
Um. Would you like a motion?
Do we need a motion?
I don't need a motion opposed.
Okay, yeah, opposed. Very good. Gwen?
Uh, the facilities, the study that you talked about, I, I think I saw that in the prior budget. So is that what you're talking about? A $50,000 incentive for that? And, but then you said it's required and could you?
We, so the, the school in particular, the school in particular needs us to move forward on that so that they can. It, it may, it may exclude them from grants.
Yeah. So would that just be a study of the school facilities?
No, it's, it's town, it's town facilities and, and probably not every town facility. It's our, it's going to be our key facilities.
I mean, what?
Our, our key facilities.
But this is not, is this going to give us the same kinds of answers?
No, no, because it's not going to be focused on, on the town hall needs, right? But I think there's already been some facility studies on town hall needs. I know, you know.
Yes.
I, I know the last one, I think, was with Schonhardt. Um, and there was actually some schematic plans back there, but also, you know, two years ago, three years ago. But also, you know, two years ago, three years ago, uh, we engaged with the Yukon School of Engineering. And actually, some of this board saw their presentation, which is actually a three-dimensional computer model. Um.
But that was for this building.
That was for a town hall.
As an addition to this building, it was a standalone.
It was a standalone building that in the the I the sites identified for that were. At Knott's Road or over here on the other side of the State Troopers Office. Yeah. So there there's that piece that's been done also, and they did look at facility needs at that time as part of. Um, part of their planning. So I think, you know, when when a group convenes to discuss that, we try to put all that information together for them. Because I think it generates a great starting point.
One, I I. Anybody else have any questions? Thomas, go ahead.
Well, I, well, no, that's going down.
So my thought process is that we should figure out when we can bond for ten million dollars. And that's when we have the project teed up and ready to go. So you go backwards from that timeframe.
Well, you're you're assuming that we would pay visit with Bolton taxpayer money, and I would not, I would like to throw into the mix that. Uh, when I talked to. Uh, two other, two other towns that they did it through grants. There was big, big, big. Grant opportunities that brought the price way down.
For municipal buildings?
Oh, yeah.
And is that state or federal line?
Yes.
Okay.
And ACA and. ADA, right, ADA.
So basically, we're.
There's a lot of pieces to this.
Yeah.
So it's don't feel that we're looking at this big nut for the whole town has to swallow and has to be our bonding and that type of thing. Bob and I worked on it when we did the sewers and. We got sixty-five percent of it paid for by other means.
One one easy example I can share with you is a new town hall would have an emergency operations center. There are great federal grants available that help fund the that portion of the structure. Because there are specific requirements. Uh, there's some really, those those are, that's pretty low-hanging fruit to get some of those grants.
So the the bonding that's still ongoing for the schools for another seven years we're paying or four years?
Well, you you have to you'll have a small one. You have the sewer one will be gone by then. That's small. But still, the school will also be going out, but you the thing of it is, you you have to have everything in place. Before that goes, so you 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 can begin the 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 bonding process, the voting. Because it may take a couple of votes to get something to go through, so you you have to be ready, I would say, two years prior, at least two years prior to. Uh.
That's my conversation.
The dollar, yeah, the dot, well, the dollar hitting the budget, because even when you bond. It but it you could be a year out before.
When you have to put money aside for the bonding process.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, here for a for instance, right, is we've talked about, you know, globally, we've talked about potentially. Funding the new roof at the Bolton Center School in the year twenty twenty six. And, you know, what I have said to, you know, the superintendent and the facilities director is. It's time to start planning that roof now in earnest. We we don't want to be at the eleventh hour and not be able to go out for bonding. So you you do have to plan it in advance. Yes.
Let's take a break.
So I'm going to be an instigator. So we have, you know, the HVAC. At the schools, we have the roof at the schools. We're talking three to five million. We've got town hall. Lots of capital projects. Is there any, should there be, should we try try to do any type of community charrettes? Where we are going and doing focus groups with community members to get their feedback on which of these projects is important to them. Now, obviously, just a town meeting or a public hearing, but that really doesn't draw the the crowds unless maybe we marketed it differently. But I do think, like, before we, as a group of seven, who may or may not be here four years from now. Go down this path, like, I think we need to go to the public and see what's. Most important to them, what they would be willing to fund, how they would be willing to help, right? Like, I just think we need more public buy-in because that's what we're being accused of not.
We we don't have an option on the roof or the air conditioning, right? They're both. I mean, you're going to have a school with no roof. It's going to start looking like Knott's Road.
I understand. I I've already heard that there are drips and drabs coming through the, I mean. But that's part of the conversation that needs to be had with the public, right? Like, I feel like.
Well, we can tell them, I we we can, you know, this that's been going on for quite some time and it's.
Well, but I think Amanda's struggling to figure out how do we, how how do we reach out? How do we get public engagement? And I think. Well, because at the end of the day, we need people to vote for these things too. Yeah, yeah. And I don't want to sound redundant, but the more input you get, the more people you get involved in the thing, the better chance you have of it going forward. But the issue always has. And you bring it up. How do you engage the public? I mean, how, what, what's the key? Well, the key is, you know what, guys, we're going to talk about something that's may raise your taxes. You may want to come in and speak to us about it. Then you may have to throw that hammer out as a, is, I mean, that's that's an invite to say, hey, you know. This is, this is what it is, and these are, these are things that are coming down the pipe. If the roof in your house leaks, you can't say, geez, I don't want to spend the money. And you lose your house. Here we are. I mean, we're we're going to be in the same, I mean, that's a stretch, but I mean, those are the type of things that.
Pam.
You have to discuss.
This board is elected to a leadership position.
The duceries.
We are elected to look at the issues, evaluate the issues, and bring the issues forward to attend. We need to do homework and provide and decide priorities. And bring it to the public and say which issues. Here's the issue, here's the reason for it, and do you support it? We're not allowed to campaign it. There are laws against that. Other groups can campaign this stuff. And we have a history in this town where we had four projects at once. Do you remember, Gwen? That we brought forward and we picked them up, actually, on one past time, it was fire ha- uh, firehouse. And then the other three were done subsequent years. We tried to pass all four at once. But it brought the issues forward, but the homework was done. And so it was able to move forward, and the only one that never got passed was the library. Hi, Bob. Sorry, the um, was the was the library expansion. So, and that just comes from news history and from the eighties and the early nineties. But we got the school extension. We did a lot, and it took a lot of work by a lot of people. But was leadership brought forward? This is the need. This is what we are looking at. And then you open it up for discussion. You have to have some, as opposed to being really broad and saying, what do you want to talk about? You need to bring it forward specifically, and then you can get I guess or no, or you can. Massage it a little bit so that it's you you find there's more comfort level out in the community. But you're right, it's difficult to reach out. We don't have the same coverage that we used to have. The newspapers were a big deal in it, but we also had. Political action committees that campaign.
Mm-hmm.
So we, there are ways to do it, uh, and there are ways to do it, uh, as you've seen. Different groups worked on the.
Right.
Discussing the charter revision. Somebody personally took on a a charter revision in how to. Inform the public on it. Someone took on, a group took on the budget this year to inform on the budget. So it's it's doable. Sometimes you have to ask, ask to do it, but I think this board, I'm going to say one more time, has leadership capacity. And we should take it, decide which project we want to go forward with, or two projects, or three projects. And you can bring forward the information, but we need the information, and it goes back to the original discussion we had about. This board supporting the new town facility, and we have the right. As to our elected position to come forward with the ask, where do you want to put it? But we need to have some information, why it's why it's beneficial to have here, here, or here, or all three, or only one of these three. But we have to start somewhere when we're dragging our feet.
Go on.
I I'd just like to respond and say, like, I'm not proposing that our process stalls while we consider public feedback, you know. Yes, now I'm an elected official, but I'm a grassroots organizer, social worker, and I know that you need the buy-in from the people to get. Stuff done, and I think, you know, the feedback we get a lot is that we're bringing people in too little, too late. After things have already taken a certain course, and so ju- we need to keep it in our mindset. When is it appropriate to bring bring people in? Do I think we need more details and stuff fleshed out before it goes to people? Absolutely, because you can't come with them with nothing. You're just going to get a bunch of spitballing, right? Um, but I do think we need to be very deliberate about how we bring this to folks and get buy-in, because if. You know, I I just think it's it's a very important part of what we do, and I tend to operate from more of a horizontal. Position than a vertical leadership, top-down kind of mentality. Um, I understand we were elected to these. You know, to these positions, but I do think, you know, we have a responsibility to to get that feedback and buy-in from our. The folks who put us here, so that's it. Can I make a motion?
Um.
That we set aside a special meeting?
Sure, yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the board um, set a date for a special meeting to further discuss next steps on the uh. Projects outlined in from the retreat.
My voice went second, sorry.
There any other discussion?
I will be following that with the second motion that we begin the process of looking at, of course, site locations of the town hall.
Um, anybody want a second to second motion?
No, not yet.
Okay, that's a follow, okay. Yeah, yeah, this would be interesting. Colonel Boni, uh, is there any discussion on a date for this?
But you have to, it's a vote that we're going to do it.
Okay, uh, all in favor of voting at seven, yes, zero, no. Uh, so we got to pick a date. What's that?
Summer, of course.
Well, we don't. I don't know how far you guys want to go with dates.
Right, go on.
End of June is kind of empty.
Well, we have the.
Seven, eight, seventy.
How about Tuesday, July ninth?
Day to me.
Tuesday, so I like.
Yep.
Pam, are you back from your wedding?
I am.
You are?
I'm on.
I am available the ninth. The following week I would be available, the week of the fifteenth.
Okay, I am not available.
Pam's not available. Well, it doesn't have to be Tuesday, right? Or does it have to be a Tuesday?
No.
Thursday, uh, Thursday, July eighteen.
We have a board of select meetings somewhere in that. The second, okay.
First of July eighteen, this finance.
What date do you have there?
I suggested the eighteenth, but um, Amanda said that's finance.
Tim, are you, are you available like, uh, the the eighth, or are you gone that week?
The, it just so happens that the week of the eighth, I'm gone.
Okay, okay.
Anybody have a problem with June twenty seventh, Thursday?
June twenty seventh?
You are?
How about Tuesday, July twenty third?
That's fine.
You've gone a lot, Ken.
You're not here?
What about uh, first week in July, like the second?
We're going to, we have our regular meeting.
That's our regular meeting.
Gotcha.
Seventeenth? Are you going that whole week, Kim?
Well, if you'd like to do the ninth, I could zoom in. That would be fine as well, if it works best for everyone else.
Okay. That works, you may, um, what's a good, what's a good time for everybody? I'll suggest a six, okay. It was great for me, Pam.
Okay.
Six o'clock. We can call it the. B O S retreat two.
We need a separate motion just at the time?
No.
No.
You said.
Tuesday, July ninth. At six, there's a ZBA meeting at seven. That's that's just a meeting location.
We can have your location. Here, we'll just.
They're not using the Zoom.
To see, this is Kathy, the the board clerk. The board clerk is a girl. Yes, board clerk.
Is it possible to have the meeting in a different location?
Yes, oh, yes, yeah.
Only because the meetings that start at six o'clock, there's so much activity going through the town hall. That just people walking through on my end, it sounds like horses walking through. It's so loud that I can bear, it's so interruptive when you, when you're discussing things.
Thank you for sharing that part that we don't, we're not privy to.
I'm making a note to put it in room A.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can we use that anecdote when we propose a new town?
You you can use it, please.
Thank you.
It's an original. Okay, so. Uh, Pam wants to make a second motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a second motion that the facilities subcommittee uh, review. And bring forward back to the board possible locations for a. Town hall or town hall annex, whatever, uh, but town hall facility. And uh, with a pro and con list, which one?
Do we have a second?
Br- bring back, make sure I heard, review locations. Thank you.
For the town.
Sure, yes.
Yes.
Okay, that'll second.
Yeah, I was going to second. All in favor? Aye, aye, that's seven, four.
I don't hear anything, I'm sorry.
Um, who is on the building subcommittee?
Facility?
Facility building, yes, yeah.
Is that me? Was that?
The matter, I think, yeah.
No, I I I'll join.
So what kind of date do we want to come up with for that? We don't have to worry about the Pam schedule.
The less people means, you know, usually a little easier.
A little easier, yeah, so we want to try for Thursday, June twenty seventh. That date's going to keep coming up.
I don't think I'm going to be available that night. I I could be available during the day, possibly.
You have to have it the meeting before the ninth of July, right?
Oh, yeah.
Well, no, no, not really, because this is not the, this won't.
This won't be a one meeting.
This this won't be a one meeting thing.
Right.
Look at options, discuss options, so.
Um, when's our kickoff meeting going to be there?
Kickoff what?
Starting to discuss the location for the town hall.
That's the way to discuss.
That's what we're talking about, yeah, so we're we're trying to round what would be a good date and.
What about Monday, July eighth?
Monday's not good. I golf Mondays. Sorry.
Let's go back.
Well, I can quit there.
Yes, well, I think you have to decide whether it's a daytime meeting or an evening meeting.
Right, yeah.
Some some people work and some people have more flexibility.
So, so uh, I'm flexible. Does it matter? Like, see early meetings? Eight o'clock, eight thirty, well, morning meetings would be great with me. Tim?
Tim?
Uh, depends on which day, but yes, I could do early morning typically.
When?
Yes.
So take a date, take a date, what's the?
Not Wednesday.
With um, dawn mornings, it doesn't make any difference, you know, to meet as early as the seventeenth or twenty fourth.
What about Monday, July first?
Sure.
Yeah.
Fun.
I'll give you, I'll give you some information, but I'm away that way, so. But I, you don't need me, right, but I can give you some information.
But I, you don't need me, right, but I can give you some information to discuss.
So July first, eight thirty.
Mather, you all right, you have that date, okay?
Uh, yeah. Do we have to have the Zoom setup for this meeting? I assume we do.
Doesn't have to be, it could be just. Without Zoom, but you could do.
At what time?
Zone.
Eight thirty.
Well, well, if we don't have to have that.
You have a member of the public that would like you to have it on Zoom.
So, can you, so it would have to be from from this location, right?
No, it could also be from room A.
We can do it from A.
We can see, we we could, we would just set it up the night before.
You can also each do it from your, the privacy of your home.
Oh, yeah, that's true, you you don't even have to be in the same space.
Oh, that's true, wow.
You could do Zoom only.
No.
No, yeah, there are some that don't. Let's meet. July fifty thirty.
Let's use, if we can do it on room A, I think that would be better, with the without the interruptions that absolutely gonna be happening here.
So are we saying July first at eight thirty A M?
Yes. And you can Zoom from there, too.
I'm gonna get there early so I get the spot in front of the air conditioner.
That doesn't go in the minutes, London.
Hey.
I don't, I don't think I will have internet connectivity where I am. But if I do, I'll try to join.
So will there be somebody there to handle the Zoom?
That should be, they said, I prefer. And you just.
You know how to function, you know how to work it?
Yes, Board Clerk.
You got it.
I I just wanna be, I I. I just wanted to give the board the head heads up, I've been called for jury duty in July. I don't know whether I have to report or not, so um. You may or may not have me as your clerk, is what I'm saying.
Good, it'll be recorded, so it'll be.
That's why we're making it the first, the odds of you being there the first is slim.
You can tell him your job doesn't give you jury duty time, and therefore.
You have civic duty.
Um. Okay, so I think that concludes that, and now we're gonna move on to number eight, and. I would like to.
Mr. Chairman?
Entertain.
Chairman?
Yes.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven G.
You missed G. Oh, I'm sorry, Pam, all that thought.
Seven. G. Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, that's what we were working on, yeah.
The chairman before us is a press release from the governor's office. I have read over the Public Act twenty four forty six. Regarding. The property tax exemptions for veterans who have service connected permanent and total disability rating, which is not included in like. Minutes, um, I'm sorry, in the agenda title of. Seventeen, uh, I would like to suggest. That someone other than myself, uh. Make a motion that we table this until the next meeting. So that we can get a. A description of. Public Act forty four forty six. The bill analysis, how it affects the town of Bolton, and that can be done either through. Obtaining information from the Council of Small Towns or. Um, Connecticut Council of Municipalities. Or. We're gonna spend the money and have our town attorney do it, which I don't presume is necessary. And how it affects our tax base, I don't believe we have any information before, so this time I would. Suggest that someone. Table this until the next meeting.
I would, because I read that thing, and I, quite frankly, I said, what? And and um, no.
You read the bill, or you read?
I read that little.
Press release.
That's just the press release, it didn't say any.
Didn't say a damn thing.
And that's why I read the bill.
Well, then, and and it doesn't really define. Who, it doesn't really define. What, it doesn't say, is the state gonna pick up the tab on this?
They're paying, it's 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 unfundamental, uh, and the reason I will not be voting. Making the motion nor voting on this is because it could affect my.
Right, so, so I will tell you that. I attended a meeting where the bill analysis was done. And. So did. The assessor, and she has provided you with information. In tonight's packet with how she believes it will affect the town of Bolton.
Yes.
Um, yes.
Uh, yeah, I just had a question, so Jim, you were there, so it takes effect. October one, twenty twenty four, that's after this year's tax bills will go out, so it won't impact this fiscal year, correct, it won't impact next fiscal year?
Correct.
But.
So. The analysis that she gave us was just existing. Veterans. That are on the disabled veterans list. Go ahead.
And they're released.
What's that?
This time I'll be recusing my son.
So. So that's the the assessor has provided you.
Of the exact.
A a list of a hundred percent disabled veterans that she is aware of that are currently on the twenty twenty three grant list. Uh, and what the impact, so it doesn't tell you what the tax impact is. It tells you. The amount that will be tax exempt based on this. War, it's huge. It's enormous.
It's two point five million dollars.
Yeah.
It it'll go up.
So when I did the math. If it were to take effect this year, it would have been like a point one five mil.
Yeah.
Impact.
Yeah, I mean, it's this, it's a huge.
Not insignificant.
No.
It was not at all, and 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 um. Not that, not that. To go from. Where we currently are in providing assistance to a hundred percent. Well, even as veteran myself, I I. I'm not a disabled veteran. Uh, I have a hard time. With that, particularly in that. In. In the developing of this thing, um, you would think they would have.
Phased it in.
Phase, not only phased it in, but have had a outreach to our communities to 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 at least to see, guys. You know, how's this gonna impact you, how how's this gonna? How 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 can this be done? Do you have a suggestion? As Jim said. Most of these things are. By progression, over a period of time, a percentage for a couple of years, another percentage, so you could work it in. This is a disaster for e- every community, not rich the band they are. Yeah. I mean, it's it's kinda like, okay, so what programs, what school issue do you cut? I mean, that's, that's what it says.
Yeah. Probably what, a hundred grand?
No.
Did you hear anything, Jim, about whether or not this includes? Dependents or spouses of deceased.
I did not.
One hundred, and this list does not include those households.
I think that's accurate. No.
And there's no income eligibility, like, doesn't matter.
No, it's not dependent on that.
So I guess this discussion is just a discussion.
It's really, I think, for a point of information.
And it's mostly, and it's mostly aimed at at the finance members here.
Who really have enough on their plate right now.
Well, yeah, fortunately, it's not, it's not this year's.
It's not.
No.
Right.
But.
We're already gonna be facing a revenue shortfall next year, so.
Right, so here we are. Uh, no, I I. Yeah, the purpose behind this really was to share the information.
Yeah.
With the board, and and it may evolve a little bit.
It was to ruin our summer once this, so that we have to think about this.
Next year.
Disabled, that it's a different story, so.
Right. It's all about perspective, right?
Yeah, we'll have to figure it out.
Uh, this this is a program. Something like this re- really is. Is a state, should be a state funded.
Hmm.
Program. It really should, and if they want it, then. Be equal, it should be, and it's shared through the the state tax or whatever, so they should do that, to me. That's the only fair way of doing this for everybody. Because. Um. If you're in a community that had a high level of this, and they they get hit. That community is gonna have a a negative impact far greater than another community, and where's the? You know, in trying, and I'm sure behind this is attempt of someone trying to do something. Good for for re- veterans who obviously. Uh, are deserving of help. But this is not the way to do it.
You're on the same special education soapbox again. The same damn thing.
So how many is?
Sorry, man, it's 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 hard to shut the switch off. Like, I should hit there, so. You know.
How many other states do this? Yeah, I don't have the information on. You know, so Connecticut could be becoming a traction.
Well.
Disabled pass.
Uh, whether it is or it isn't, I.
Sell sell your three thousand, hundred thousand dollar house in Mass that you're paying fifteen thousand a year on, move to Connecticut. And you can live, you your groceries are paid for.
Yeah.
So.
But it's cold.
Just to take.
In the winter.
So anyways, okay, any other discussion on that? Uh, Maddy, wanna go?
I'll grab it. You're going to eight?
We're going eight, yeah.
Pam, we're going to eight.
Very eloquent job. Reports and updates. Uh. Fiscal year twenty four. Budget. Did you hear him?
He couldn't hear himself either, could he?
Tonight, Cindy.
Uh, is there any questions on the fiscal year twenty four? So the the blue line will look a little better after the. Finance committee meets, and hopefully they'll agree with our transfers into the. Grass line, I hope, but uh. If you if you look at where we are. Uh, we have. You know, expensed, you know, almost eighty one percent of our budget, so we are. You know, we we don't have a lot of money left for the rest of the year, but fortunately, we have a lot of year left.
You're right, still have one month. This is a, this is as of May thirty first?
Yes.
Awesome.
We're we're doing okay, other than moving money into the trash.
Down the trash can. All right, any other questions on budget?
Uh, tax collection looks like it's going very well. Pretty much the same report we saw last month. Yeah, not a lot of tunes there.
Any other questions on that? Uh, now we move on to an act to consider. Accounts payable. Yes.
Should we accept the accounts payable reported presented?
Is there a second?
One second.
Amanda seconds, is there any discussion?
I have just a couple.
Yes.
Four things, on page nine. Firematic Supply Company, eighteen thousand four hundred thirty three dollar bill. A P T with I T one thirty four, is that the newest fire truck?
It is, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna repeat myself from last month. Here again, we have a huge bill in addition to our already big purchase price. So there's more money that we keep putting into this new fire truck, I think the public needs to know that. And in addition, we're gonna have those big uh, interest payments on. The bond for the truck. The what?
The loan.
The loan for the truck, so. It just, it just dismayed me, I just don't, I think that there are lots of costs that that people who voted for this truck. Probably didn't realize, and now they're bubbling to the surface. And that's why I'm putting some emphasis on it to make sure, and and Linda, I hope that you'll put that in the minutes. And my second uh, only other question is on page twelve. Uh, for landi construction, um, the the twenty one thousand five hundred dollar payment, is that the last payment for the work on the trail through the center of town?
For that section, yes.
For, well, I felt, I think that this, the their work was under the the Community Connectivity Grant. Which was from the corner uh, to here, to the street.
But there is actually another piece of the grant that we have yet to get completed. And we're currently working on collecting pricing on that. And that is the piece from here. Down Hever Road where Hever Road gets restripped.
Oh, okay.
Over to the corner at Lou Messing, and there's a crossbar. That goes across to Lou Messing.
So that's all the part of that hundred and eighty six.
Yes.
Okay, so that, is that the last piece?
That's the last piece.
Okay, and are we still on track to have?
We're still on track.
Enough money to pay for all of that, okay, good, thank you. That's it.
Uh, any other questions? All in favor?
Well, I, it's not a question. But I went back to look at the notch road electricity. So in. December to January, it was seventeen hundred. February to March, it was fifteen hundred, March to April, it was twelve hundred, and now we're down to just over a thousand, so. Hope, it does look like closing some of that off, I say, well, it could also be seasonality, but I'm hoping it's.
Well, somewhat, it is somewhat both, right, because. The, you know, the senior center, you know, is. There's, there's an electric heater in the air conditioning unit, which sometimes kicks in. Um, but in thousands, we haven't shut the power off. But we're not using.
Right.
We thought we would leave the power on. Through the abatement process, because it'll make the abatement process easier. But that's, I think that's a great observation.
And then the only random thing I was noticing is, I've heard complaints about. The tennis lights that are on all night, and they shine in people's faces when you come down the road, so like. Have to have those on?
They're not on all night.
They're not just.
They're on timer. You go over and you you can walk.
Okay, so they do turn off eventually, they were on in the dark at like eight o'clock one day, and I I just, it's almost like going off.
You can go over to.
I'm cheap, I was looking for money savings, okay.
Yeah, and and I will say that Mr. Butch Mowich has tried a couple of things to try to shield. Right, I know that he he and Mr. Fornier were having some discussions about what they tried.
Yeah. Unsuccessfully so far.
Yeah.
From the stop sign point of view. Cause it's pretty ugly.
Correct.
They should have turned the tennis courts around.
They were built without lighting?
They were.
Yeah, the lighting was added later.
So. Uh, all in favor of approving the council table?
Hi.
As presented. Hi, that's seven, yes, zero, no. Uh, now we'll move on to the. Budget transfers.
Chairman?
Yes.
Budget transfers before us, and I believe at this time of the year, and they're under five thousand dollars, does that?
They're just for informational purposes.
That, and I don't see any others.
That's correct.
So at this time, um.
Move on to. Report on Nathan Hill potential parking spots. Well, now, turn that over to Gwen.
Okay, thanks, so um. May twentieth, Tim, Mather, Brent, Mayerson, and I walked, Bob, we missed you, I don't know.
No, that was me, I. Had a lot of issues going on with my. My friend at past, so that was.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just kind of. Sorry about that, but it messed me up.
Well, sorry for that, boss. Uh, so we looked at uh three sites, two on Stony Road, one at the end of Howard Road. Um, the Howard Road one uh is is a no-go because Tim had a had a communication with the owner of the property off the end of Howard Road. We would have required, it would have required the owner to either sell or give the town a right of way or an easement between the end of Howard Road for about five hundred feet to connect to the Nathan Hill corridor. And that person, the owner said no. So um, the two on Stony Road are are pretty good options. Uh, one is the um, storage unit. Actually, the driveway to the storage unit actually is located across town of Bolton Property. And when you, when you go in there, there's quite wide grassy areas on either side of the driveway, and it's level. So it would be ready, it's ready-made to drive in there um and park uh along there. The downside of that is that, I mean, the owner might not like that. He might not like cars parked along his driveway. And the other downside is to get there from there to the trailhead or the trail. It requires maybe a thousand feet of um walking up the road, and there's not, the shoulders are very narrow along Stony. The other, um, the other spot on Stony that we looked at is in a an old house site that was taken as part of the the whole taking of that corridor. It's on the south side of Stony. It's, I don't know how big the the lot is. Well, it doesn't really matter because the the town of Bolton owns a very wide area in there. Uh, there's a, you can see an opening in the trees. It goes in, it's pretty level, somewhat gravelly, somewhat paved. So it wouldn't require that much um work in there. It would require some vegetation clearing. I don't know, maybe some adding some surface material. I'm not, I'm not quite sure about that. So and that between there and where the trail is, is probably a couple hundred feet. So um, I polled Tim and Mather and Brent on their opinions on of all the, all the possibilities that we looked at. Those were the three, but then in the, we had also looked at two on Route Six. Sorry, one on Route Six and two on South Road. And uh, we all are leaning toward the two on Stony, um, probably preferably the one, the old house lot. Because of the problem, the potential problem with the owner of the storage, we, you know, we don't, we don't know how he would feel about cars parked there. So um, it, Tim and Mather, do you think I relayed the information properly?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay. So I think um, I guess, I guess now what we we need to know what what our next step should be. If if, so our recommendation would be that's that second area on on Stony Road.
Is this where we take a vote on it?
Well, I just have a question.
Yeah.
Just, I I was trying to and I I can't remember if the house is, did it sit in the upper part of the right, of of the of the area that we, the town received or is it below it?
Right in the middle.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's level. When you go in, it's a level site. Is that what you're asking?
No, yeah, where is it in location to the whole, you know, the the parcel that we that we receive from the state?
Halfway.
About midway in, oh, just a minute.
Between Route Six and?
No, between.
The notch and between South Road.
Yeah, I I, no, I I understand that, but there's a, we have a, we we own a piece on the, on the, on the east, west side, I mean, the 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 boundary, we have a west side boundary, and we have an east side boundary. Sort of in the middle, is that about where it is, or is it one end to the other? What I'm asking is that is, do you have, would you have to walk uphill to get to it or to walk downhill? Is it pretty much in the middle? To get to the trail?
You'd have to walk about two hundred feet.
Up or down?
Up.
Okay, that's where I was going. Thank you. Geez, took me forever to get there. Yeah, thank you. That's all. Now, now, now I, now I know where it is. So thank you.
And we did talk about how it would have been, the best situation would be to have a parking area at either the far north end or the south end. So that everybody, but then we just decided, let's just try to get this parking done and get people using the trail. If we have to modify it in the future, fine, if not, maybe people will be fine with this and just starting the the trail halfway.
Yeah.
Middle.
We uh Mamick uh suggested that we notify the neighbors so we don't run into the same situation that we did on the town.
Yeah, there really aren't any neighbors.
There are neighbors above and below.
Not close, but they're there.
I mean, I think we could, but I think the first step would be to decide what we're gonna, whether we want to go forward with this, what what needs to be done on it. And then we could tell the neighbors what what we plan to do with it.
Budget pass by eight.
Yeah.
Wow.
Eight votes.
Wow.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. You you made our Thursday night meeting very pleasant, enjoyable week.
And you guys are cruising through this meeting too.
It's tomorrow?
No.
So you'll guess. We
I thought it was Thursday.
We we should notify, it was Thursday. There's a meeting, because I, it's Thursday. We should notify the neighbors, just tell them about these lots are being concerned for the parking area.
You're going to be hesitant.
The next quarter selectmen's meeting, if they want to come into public comment.
And and we should also take a look at, hopefully.
Right.
Before we spend it.
We have enough aerials and
Yeah.
geographic map and get a feel for elevations and everything. Before we give it, spend any money on it.
So I guess I'm, that's what I'm wanting. Pam, I totally agree that neighbors need to know. I mean, but.
Spend any money
Yeah.
on engineering is, because already, I just said to Mather, we're already in the red at the South Road issue.
Yeah.
I would like to have everyone aware because we have angst in the neighborhood. It is my neighborhood, I'll be frank about it. And um, yeah, there's anxiousness about it.
Yeah.
I guess I would, I don't want to notify them if we don't even have a proposed size, you know, what the entrance is going to look like. We we don't have anything to tell them at this point. So I would rather have, take our next step.
Things that that I think Amanda brought up is that if the neighbors don't know that you're talking about it, you know, they they can't give you any input on any of that.
Okay. Is that something your office could do, Jim, to?
You talking the whole trail network or just?
Yeah, which, are you just talking about the people that are on the south side of Stony? The south side of Stony? For all of Stony Road?
Mister Mister Robbins.
There's only like, like four.
I think there's six or six or so. It's not, it's not.
That whole street.
Yeah.
Could you pull up the CROG? Can you go on the CROG website? We could find that right now, just C C R G.
You could figure out the whole house lot number. So if you're considering taking parking where that house number used to be. Just keep it cut and dry.
So, and I think I think they contact the businesses at the bottom and as well, just everybody, everybody knows that that's being discussed on that road. And it's a good neighbor boss.
Yep. So what is the next, what's the next step on? What's the next step? Other than notifying them?
Does Jim want to send John up there and start their connection or?
It wouldn't be John, it would be, it would be Sean.
Sean, yeah.
I can show you where to.
Because it was a drive. I'm I'm hopeful that we could do it.
Yeah, meet trees down.
Yeah, because that 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 was an existing lot and was a house, so.
Yep.
The the grade, the grading is is pretty much there.
It's good.
Yeah.
And I I don't think that we that we need an engineered design.
No, I know, he said it. No, no, no. I know you guys were having a conversation.
Yes, sorry about that.
And I I said, I I'm hopeful that based on your description now, I haven't gone down there to look at it. But I'm hopeful based on your description, it's something that we could accomplish just with talent resources.
It is very open.
I forgot all about that house too.
Pam said it was Ilvi Cannon's old house.
Yeah.
Have you seen?
What?
You know, then you just. And then um, I don't know. Can you zoom in on Bolton?
Ilvi's mothers.
Oh, did Ilvi grow up in that house?
No.
No.
Oh, okay.
No.
She killed.
Okay, so.
So should I, would you like me to meet with Sean too? Or do you just want him to go out? I don't have to be here.
It probably would be great if you're available. You know, you or, you know, other members of your.
So it can be a little more specific as to the area and all.
You can share, you can, that way you can share your vision directly.
Okay, I'd be glad to do that.
I'll try to, I'll try to work on putting a draft letter together and um setting up an opportunity for you to get together with Sean.
Okay.
You know, now that I know it's somewhere it is, that's that is, without a doubt, the better spot, all all the possibilities. The one curve coming down the hill is a little.
We looked at the sightline, we talked about that a little bit. Coming up the hill is where if you're coming, you're coming up the hill, um, but Mather pointed out and Tim pointed out that people are, have not gained a lot of speed yet at that point, coming uphill. And if necessary, that we could cut some trees because the town owns all of that.
That whole side of the road.
Yeah, so we could clear out to improve the sightline.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's that's just a maintenance issue more.
It's a curvy mess right there. Just all everyone knows in that site, it's not a straight, it's not a straight line. For visible, and you're having people cross the road.
Well, they they are not going to be crossing the road right there because the trail is actually a couple hundred feet continuing up. Well, I do, does, are you saying that we should look for a different area? Because there there are, well, I think we've explored every possibility.
I think you need to look at sightline. I I'm just saying, I mean, I almost hit somebody um girls today, and it was very distressing.
If.
No, it could be said right turn home, now we're driving.
Well, I don't think it's.
It's it's pedestrians crossing.
I think it's pedestrians at this point, because they cross Stony to get.
But where the pedestrians would be crossing Stony on the trail would be more on the straight.
The trail, yeah. Straight up above, but not below, that's curvy.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the curve.
Because you can.
Goes like this. And the trail would cross here, the parking is here.
Right.
And you can.
It's tough here, but where actually walking across the road is better.
You can have a trail from the parking lot.
Say off the road, it means walk up.
It does drop off, the shoulder drops off, but Sean and I could take a look at that one or.
Maybe, yeah, that might, you you know, when you look in that, you you, yeah, that could be a a great alternative to eliminate.
Start the, start the trail at the parking area.
And I don't, I don't think that's, there's a steep grade, but I don't think that's impossible. I I like the idea. Putting the trail right from the parking lot.
Yeah.
I agree, but if they want to access the other side, they're gonna have to.
It's like steel's crossing.
Yeah.
Right, right.
That just create.
I think it puts signs.
So is Sean going to contact me or how how is that gonna work?
Let me, let me reach out to him and find out what his availability is, because he's got projects going on right now. He's been finishing up a project on South Road, and he's got a paving project he's about to start. So let me find out what his availability is, and maybe I'll just connect it to it.
Sure, I mean, you could, if you have my cell number, you could give that to him if he wants to to text me. Do you, do you have my cell number?
That would be somewhere, I'm sure. Give it out, I know.
Okay, moving forward, I'd like to thank the voters of Bolton for passing the budget. And then, that's on record. Uh, the administrators officers report. Administrative officers report.
All right, so I didn't provide a a written report because I took some time off, but you know, a a lot of it's repetitive every month, so I'm just gonna focus on uh, some of the things that are are new that have happened. We had a today, we had a tax sale for two properties that uh, were i- in arrears pretty significantly. Uh, one was in arrears nearly thirty thousand dollars with taxes and fees. The other was a little over twenty-two thousand, and both properties um sold for enough money to make the town whole with taxes today. You know, it's always sad when we have to take something to tax sale, but um but it was a successful tax sale. So as long as nobody defaults with their deposits and fol- follows through with their purchases on Monday, um, those those funds will be coming to the town here in fairly short order. Um, we have scheduled A E D, C P R, and stop to lead training for staff. Now, that is scheduled for six ten. Uh, Narcan training has also been scheduled for six ten for staff. Um, we will be participating in the statewide emergency drill on the twelfth. And that statewide drill focuses on uh, elections this year. And we have posted the M S four stormwater reporting. And we are, as soon as that the posting expires on the fourteenth of June, as soon as that is done, we will file that with the state. Um, the annual picnic is tomorrow, and that will have a fire extinguisher training component. Um, we have opted to have a um voluntary compliance check with Con OSHA for the town garage facility. That was actually scheduled for this week, but they've moved it based on a caseload issue that they have. So that that has been rescheduled, but that is something we're looking forward to in the near future. And we are planning on opening Indian Notch Park on the twenty-second of this month. Any questions?
And we also how many people turned out for the natural? Uh, is there nine?
Yeah. We had, I think, not nine bidders came for um, the high, they call them high chest, by the way. So something new that Rodney and I are on, yes.
They'll do your teeth, they'll do your teeth or your asbestos.
Yeah, we, so we had, we had nine firms uh, that attended the pre-bid walkthrough. Well, that that process is going pretty good. Uh, we have one question that we've got to post the answer to by the end of the week. Um, and then, you know, we should be in a situation next week to start, I think it's the tenth, is it, that 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 they should do?
Yeah.
And we will review those and um, you know, yeah, we'll qualify those, have conversations with the firms and be looking to award that bid pretty quickly.
And this is just for, is this for the analysis and remediation?
No, just for the.
Just analysis, okay.
So the 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 R F P out, that's out for that right now is for analysis uh, for testing and we, a report and monitoring of the abatement process.
Okay. And then another R F P is gonna go have to go out for the abatement process.
So we can, we can do one of two things. We can either do one R F P that covers abatement and demolition. Or we could do it in two R F Ps. We could do abatement as a separate issue and then demolition, or just do it as one.
And what was the question then?
The question, the question was from a company called Ty and Bond, and they have asked if we would decide how many tests that we should have done so that everybody is bidding on the same amount of tests. Um, we we are in discussion about how we're going to respond to that question, but reality is we're not experts in this field. And we don't believe that we should be telling an expert how many tests they should plan to perform for us. Um, but rather, they should tell us how many tests they're planning to perform for the price that they're giving us. And that enables, enables us to, you know, make compare comparisons without telling them how to do their job.
Kind of assume the EPA will in order to do the reporting to them, they have to have X, Y, and Z. We don't know what that is.
Right.
So we're kind of stuck. Uh, yes?
I did, because I don't think it was mentioned to the full board that we did not end up going after the C D S.
That's correct.
Grants, because it was not
We didn't qualify.
Eligible for the various.
When we, when we got into the.
Structure requirements.
When we got into all of the weeds of the requirements, we we failed to meet all of the requirements. Was it, was a great idea.
It was because it wasn't new construction and because it didn't meet one of the goals, primarily the fact that we're not very low.
Right.
Income.
It's right. So that brings us around to.
Can I make a request?
Yeah.
Under, so this is a request for the town. Can we start doing double-sided printing and save some trees, please?
Give me an A.
One of the habits. One of the um issues is that we buy cheaper paper and it's really, you can see when you hold two pieces of paper together.
Yeah, but we can deal. It would save a lot of trees. We shouldn't even be doing paper copies at all.
We've tried it.
Chuck's gonna be.
The trees are grown. It's just a crime. They just.
And it's the more young, the younger tree, well, one thing about.
It's not like we're cutting down redwood.
Since this is, this is my field, the one thing about the the tree things, old growth forests are the least effective forest to to clear, to clear our air. It's young growth forests that do the best cleansing of uh, of of anything, and that's.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
And we're off the topic, and it's time for the.
No, it's not. We have other, and I'd like to bring up one thing.
Any monthly reports?
That was his monthly.
Oh. Uh, other.
Uh, I would just like to um ask, is to say a very special um commemorative moment uh on the passing of Raymond Soma was served on many boards and commissions in this town, and as well as the fire department needs to ask, and uh, he will be greatly missed.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Agreed.
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Any seconds?
Yep.